You're rolling.
Okay, I'd like to call the Rundle Kenny Ford meeting to order at seven o'clock. Before we get started, I'd like to take a roll call.
Marty Kane.
Bob Coon.
Roger Moran.
Richard Benoff.
Ted Verhoeve.
And Tardif, board secretary.
Also, before we start, if you have any cell phones, if you could turn them off, please, it would appreciate it. On the agenda this evening, we have approval of minutes for the meeting on February 27th, January 23rd, and October 24th. Public comment on non-agenda items. Pending applications. Kenny Boncourt seasonal cottages. Southern Maine Marine. And Kate's Butter Cow Barn. If time permits, we'll have zoning ordinance modifications in the DB2 district. Has anybody had a chance to read all those? We should have had a lot of time to read the minutes, they've been out for quite some time.
Big motion that we accept the three minutes as written.
Do we have to go separate?
I think we should.
Yeah, okay, let me start with October 24th sidewalk, everybody in favor of that one?
Yeah.
Other polls?
Did we get a second on that?
Yeah, second.
Okay, the February 27th planning board meeting, have a motion on that?
Yeah.
Second by Vaughn, all in favor?
Yeah.
I have to extend the question.
Okay. And last one. January 23rd meeting, how do we vote on that one?
Move to accept.
Have a second? All in favor? So pass. The one from the public to do non-agenda topics, I'd like to start with Rundle Kenny Boncourt seasonal cottages. Ted, do you want to start by bringing us up to speed a little bit?
We do Paul Comer?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, once again, we're before us is the issue of Rundle Kenny Boncourt seasonal cottages is currently, they're going to be expiring in April. And as you know, they are currently in the process of doing their, doing a TIF district with the town, working with the town, and doing a TIF district that will facilitate full development of the project and ensure that it will be completed over time, in which the town will see a captured value out of that, that will be of high benefit to the community, both in economic development and also save dollars that will be shielded from, or excluded, I should say, from state revenue sharing formulas, school apportionment formulas, and county tax formulas. However, because it can't, nothing can happen on that until April, excuse me, until June, their permit extension will expire, so they're asking for another extension. They will not be doing any work on this until they get the, the TIF decision is made in town. On top of that, quite frankly, staff is under the impression that since they've spent about a hundred thousand dollars on the water system in the town of Rundle in preparation for this, and they made those contributions that have basically built that, the KKWW pump station down at River Run, excuse me, down at Portland Road in Walker's Lane, that constitutes a significant start to the project. However, they are of the opinion and concerned that in fact, that they would like to get the extension just as an insurance policy, in case anybody were to question the viability of that contract, a hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, they're, they're.
It's kind of an insurance policy.
Good motion.
I thought, I thought he was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to grant the extension.
Have a second? All in favor? Any polls? I guess not.
Sorry, Joe. You made the ride for nothing.
I enjoy coming up here, to be honest with you.
We're trying to make this.
I have to get away from the phone, I do.
Wow, I called Joe up and said, you better get up here. They may not act on this without you here.
Well, he is here.
We have to go through findings of facts again?
I mean, we have to do that again for the extension?
No.
I printed them out if you wanted.
Close for gold record.
Okay.
Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's hard. We'll beat on Paul then.
That's what I'm saying, we'll pick it on our next applicant. Okay.
Joe, you want to say anything to the board?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Also, what it helps us with this extension is having a valid permit banking financing, they ask, and if they look at the expiration date, and we don't have something from new folks, they say, well, wait a second, we're missing something here. So, that is, and we're putting our team together, and we've done our market study, and we're working with Kemp Goldberg for our marketing and branding out of Portland, Maine. So, those things are ongoing, so we are moving forward with work, so to speak. So, thank you.
That was good work.
Yeah.
Several years.
Much too late. How is the word Rundle going to fit in?
It's going to be a Rundle Kenny Boncourt Cottage Preserve LLC.
Okay.
Okay?
Making sure.
It's on record.
It's on record.
It is. You recall, that was a requirement.
I realized that, but I just see.
You have to forgive some of my associates, they took a little understanding on their part, so to speak. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, let's see, we've got Southern Maine Marine. I guess we can let Paul lead.
Let's let Paul go.
Yeah.
So we can beat up on him.
Wouldn't you like the, oh, where?
Sure, that would. Yeah, that way we can get on camera.
See, he brought it all easy.
That's ours is missing, I think that's ours.
That's ours. That looks like ours.
Last time, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You ain't good?
A little bit. So, I'm Paul Gabois, I'm preparing the site plan for.
I want to just turn it over. Sorry, showing this here quickly.
That hat, turn it over.
I'm Paul Gabois, I'm in engineering for Southern Maine Marine, this project, also is also a nice, we own the property. The property, we've changed the plan since the last time we came in, primarily because of the cost to complete that project, just wasn't feasible to make it work. So, this is just the original parcel, what we're still going to do is lot one and lot two, or actually this is lot one and that's lot two, Paul owns both lots, we're going to amend lot one, and come as the back portion of lot one, convey that to lot two, so we're also going to do a subdivision, mend the subdivision plan. Basically, we're providing access easement, but still going to use a common easement, so there'll be an access easement across lot one. We're also providing a 30-foot drainage easement, so that lot one, when they do develop lot one, they will be able to discharge and actually use that drainage easement to create different ponds, or whatever it might be used for stormwater management in the future for development of lot one. So, that's pretty much it as far as the existing subdivision plan is. As far as the site plan, it's changed significantly. We had two larger buildings on the rear of lot one, that was just cost prohibitive to actually level that site, to actually put those buildings in place. So, Paul decided that he wanted to change the plan, still going to use the exact same entrance that DILT approved, like we get a copy of. The building now, instead of being this side of the existing building, is now going to be on the other side of existing building, so the new proposed building will be in this location, and we'll access that from the new proposed drive, and also we'll have parking area for the new building, sales area for the new building. For the new building here, a little bit larger than the existing building, existing building is 72 by 150, this is going to be 72 by 165, so it fits all the existing gravel area that's clear now. And then we're also going to repair a new outdoor boat storage area, and that will, instead of, they say it was considered about material, because we're actually going to try to fit the contour of the land, instead of just making it level to establish for the two previous buildings. We're going to do it in phases, because as I discussed, phase one will be construct the building so you generate revenue to complete the rest of the project. So, you know, so phase two will be actually build the entrance, and then phase three will be construct this building, and they'd be associated parking with the building, and this will be phase four, actually constructing this portion of parking lot. This little area here, we're not going to include as phase one, because we will use this, they actually store some boats that are coming to be stored right here, so we'll be ready about those storage. So, this will be also included as part of phase one. We did the stormwater report for the project, we are putting attention upon downslope of the gravel area, that'll be part of the baseboard construction, and we've actually been upgrading the road and did all stormwater counts, and actually this will, even the 210 and 2500 year storm event, we're actually decreasing the flows off the property for all those events, after the 100 year event, so, besides that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
The proposed building in the top left hand corner, that's where the entrance is the facility now, right?
Correct, the current entrance is right here. There's a curb cut for that entrance right here.
And I know we've walked the site several times for the new proposed entrance, does that have site distance to it?
Yes, that's.
The new one does.
The new one is much better. It was a condition.
The new one has.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
It's greater than 600 feet in that direction, and greater than 600 feet in that direction.
Yeah. Now, the road itself is different than when we talked, right? It's considered a letter.
The new road?
Yeah. Used to come, then it come.
Yeah, the new road came more in the back.
In the back of the road, yeah, okay.
That's correct, exactly right. Yes, we're actually using the exact same entrance, only now we're bringing it, so the entrance, the, yeah, will be between these two existing buildings, and that'll be the parking area for customer parking for the new sales building.
So, before you put that in, you want to build a new building first, is that correct?
He would like to construct this building first, so we can generate revenue to actually do phase two and phase three. Correct. And so, you know, it's kind of the rationale when we did this one, you know, we're not increasing the use, we're not increasing the amount of storage area, we're not increasing any new boat storage area, we're basically taking outside boats and putting it inside. This is, I think, the only way Paul could come up with a way to actually make the entire project work, so, so yeah, be phase one, phase two the trucker drive, phase three new building.
Okay, so the increase in the actual volume of boat storage, you're saying, is going to occur after the, after the construction of the road, right, Paul?
Correct.
I think that was a limitation on your last.
That's exactly right.
Would not increase area without, without that drive because of the safety issue.
Correct. So, this is built entirely.
There could be no further build.
This actually.
In that road, if we greet the condition.
Right.
Yeah, the edge of gravel actually comes out here, so there are boats currently being stored, you know, all through this area right now. So, primarily what we're going to do is the outside storage, the outside boats will be inside the building, whether or not you can store a few boats alongside here, that's at the park, but obviously, we're not increasing any boat storage area. Until we get to this phase.
Yeah, that's when you get the measure.
Right.
The increased revenue, though, is from the boats being inside versus outside? Okay, I'm saying, if you already got the storage, I haven't got the money, there's got to be a change in.
Paul can speak to that right better than I can, but.
Yeah, that building's full, that building's full, and it gives me almost two-thirds more money inside storage than it does outside storage. So, right now, that building's full, right to the end, and put in a second one out, hopefully we'll complete what we need to do. I'm going to need some outside area at a later date to move forward. The business has grown, every year's grown. In a very, very positive direction. My idea is, is we get this first phase done here, and then out of my pocket, get the, get the road in, hopefully before winter hits, this coming next winter. And then the following spring, you know, when that road goes anywhere, put the berry up out front, on the other entrance coming in, you know, put a berm in front of it. And then the following spring, I'd like to put, leave my old brown building up until we get the new retail building up, with offices in it, and pasta pot and stuff, and then when that's completed, move everything over, and then, kind of like on a weekend, now you see it, now you don't type of a deal with the old building, to make that into a gravel parking lot, and then the fall and spring, I'll have to pave it. It's just, it takes a lot of money, so it's one thing to help, one thing has to pay for the other, that's all. You're looking at about two and a half year worth of work there.
And so, the old, the parking's, the old building is where the parking is proposed now?
Correct.
So, you're going to raise the new building, move everything into the, raise the new building, move everything in the old building, and then take it down? Yeah, because you won't be able to open until you have that, until you have your parking at the park.
Correct.
It's got to happen, like, like, raise that building and fill those parking lots.
Building, then the road. Road's got to go in, though. That's my concern because of the condition.
The road's going to be, the road's going to be before this building starts. You know, so obviously, once we start that building, we have no entrance to our site.
Right. I mean, I guess you could do it.
So, before we do phase three, this is phase two, we're going to construct this. So, before we build that, we're going to construct a new entrance, and as soon as that's constructed, move everything in and remove the old building, and then take the parking lot for that.
The new building, if everything went along great plans, will be up before this, next winter?
I think what I said.
That would be my, that would be what I'd like to see done, everything depends on, it's all just weather.
I'll fix fall. I'm just saying that that's the game plan.
Yeah, right, so the following spring, you know.
So, that, that new building would be full for, it would be occupied for the producing cupcakes?
You've got a cupcake company.
Yeah, I think, you know, when I submitted the application, you know, when I was talking to Paul, phase one, we're going to be, like, starting in the fall this year, I'm sorry, phase one, the spring, rather. So, we had that completed for winter, so the storage boats. Phase two, we would start that in the fall of 2014, so, you know, start phase two, get this constructed in the fall of 2014, and then the spring of 2015, start construction of the building. Hopefully sooner, if, obviously, if we can, but we don't want to make the, make it so tight that if.
Yeah, that's a lot of going for one person to be.
Undertaking.
And then we thought the fall of 2016, you know, complete phase four.
When everything else is in place and the road's in place.
Right.
And that's just going to be outside storage on that.
That last.
Land direct.
I'll increase that as is needed.
I see, I could do it all, when, you're going to do that ground hole in phases still?
Well, I need to do the first section of what Paul talked about earlier. I need that to move the stuff that's up by the road now, where all the aggregate is, out of the way, that's kind of like the first thing I've got to do. I need that first piece kind of knocked out, that first culvert, culvert in, some of that stuff got to be done. Then the second thing I got to do is, this whole part is going to go. This here's got to start, just come on back here and just get this, an area to move the boats off the front lawn. And then, I got to take my basin we got here where we washed boats, and cut a section of it and extend it like this, and then we can dig this here, and that can get done, hopefully by August is my plan, August, September is the latest, so we can get, get the storage in there, have them to keep going. During that period of time, this is going to get done. I want to get that done before fall, before winter hits, because my plan is, is that, get this done, close the road off, I mean, going in and out of here is going to be so much cooler than out of here. Get that done, close that off, and then what I'm going to do at that point there is, in the spring of 15, June, July, June hopefully, do this, next deal, and then, that should be done hopefully before fall hits, when we have that little lull, and then tear this down, then move everything over, get all the junk out of there, and then get the parking lot in before it snows. That would be the ideal situation, but.
Can you continue just a little bit, and go down to phase four?
Oh, is over here?
Yeah.
Well, as we grow, I mean, the business has grown so much in the last five years, is that I'm going to expand my outside storage as well, you know what I mean, for boats outside at a later date, so I'm going to, I'll start working on this out of my pocket, and I'll fill this, you know, as we go along, but get this done here, the infrastructure's going to be set in place for us, and that's going to be part of the first phase that we do, is to lay out this stuff here.
All of the stormwater management, your calculations and everything are based on the finished product?
Well, correct, but Paul, you know, obviously, it's based on this much of the previous area, if Paul decides that, you know, all he needs is this, obviously, the pond's quite capable of handling that in previous area, because, you know, it's still going to be graded correctly, so we turn this area to the greatest, because we're still going to the pond, so the pond, definitely oversized for that small amount of area, but the pond in size for this gravel area. So, you know, if you, if you want to even break this up in phases, you know, if you want to say, well, I want to do this, you have to adapt for phase, phase A or phase four, and I want to keep going, and I want to do this, and, you know.
I guess you could, I don't see that being an issue, but I don't know how the board could.
The only thing with the water control is that I have to be worried about.
Right, right. But, you know, he'll maintain, you know, obviously, his road control barriers as long as he has to, but once his site stabilizes, you know, he'll have, you know, help to stabilize the side slopes. You guys just ask.
Keep it stabilized.
Right, and help to build side slopes here, stabilize it, build side slopes, stabilize it, you know. But surely, it could be done, I mean, the pond is size for the entire project.
Now, Paul, you're not thinking about going any further to the, to the south, to the southwest?
I think he's thinking that.
He's a diamond line.
No, that's it, the ledge and the gravel.
Yeah, it's getting pretty.
You walked, it was.
Yeah, I remember, it was pretty severe.
I'm not going any further now, I'm done after that. That would be the maximum I could go without doing a huge amount of blasting.
You can see, this is a huge ledge out across right here.
Well, I remember it, that's a ledge out across right here.
That's what I was asking. Yeah. That would give you gravel for your whole parking lot.
That's why I saved all that aggregate on route one, we're going to bring, I got all that stuff we've blasted in the past, we're going to crush that up for a lot of the base work over here later on as we move forward. Most of that stuff's going to go into the road. That stuff is like gold, I mean.
That's what you call recycling.
It's just time, it just takes so much time to do one project ahead of time, and then.
Hey, Vaughn, Rich, you got any comments, questions?
No.
I have just, Paul, man, that, that turning radius is a real bear, getting out of the, out of the second building, getting around that structure, and then getting onto the road. Have you thrown any, I played something, you're thinking of.
I'm thinking about big yachts coming around the corner there, yeah.
Coming out of here.
A little coming back around through here?
Yeah.
Paul making that, he's got a, and this is a huge turning area.
And once you get that.
Well, I was just, yeah, I was just concerned about, like, you're going to have to do a lot of moving around. Boatless states.
I don't know what Paul does bow there, that's probably.
I can move that.
Well, it'll be, it's really in your way, actually, but I'm just, I'm concerned about, I think it's this, this is going to stay, right?
Correct.
So, it's going to be really this, that turning radius. This is kind of a funky arrangement here, but is, how are you going to do, how are you going to keep people from going whoom when they come in here?
There's a gate.
Oh, there's a gate?
I don't show, there's going to be a gate.
Yeah, it's not show gates, okay.
No, there will be a gate, that's why I understood, right?
There'll be a gate.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're capable of leaving.
Exactly.
We're getting close to that.
So, it's going to be a gate here, obviously, just for employees.
That's all better way of saying it.
We got signage, but I'll, I'll double check that, but I think Paul, you know, the equipment he has for him turning his boats, it's not like his.
That's a 40-foot apron in front of that, I've got a truck and trailer, that, for me, that's not a problem, because I twist that thing around.
What's concerned about you, I'm more concerned about the contractor who comes in, or the private property, the private boat owner comes in.
Well, I think the only thing, I'll make sure Ted, is that the fire truck he make it.
That's the biggest.
So, I'll make sure that.
Make the ladder truck, the 43-foot.
Right, yeah.
43-foot radius ladder truck. Not ours, but that would be probably better for them, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
That would be, that'd be better for coming in. Because that's an oblique turn.
Well, I'll make sure that guys get around, they can get in there and back up. I really don't see that being a problem, I haven't checked, but I will check.
I don't think it's going to be a problem, but.
I'll make sure.
But they only have 100 footers, don't they, Rich? Do they have a 100 footer, or do they have a 75?
I think it's 75, I don't think they have a 100 footer.
And Paul, I'm going to just have Dwight look at your drainage cowl.
Sure.
I tried to do it. I quit.
Any other comments?
No, it's just a different arrangement. Does the board need to go out there again?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Bob looks like he's not sure.
It just looks so different, that change in the road, I know that we had, first off, we just started to envision another big building by that one, you've been out since this plan was submitted?
Well, the thing is, about where that new building is, we all walked all the way and all the way through it.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And being there, seeing where that was when, from hiking from the top down, okay, actually gave us a better viewpoint of what everything else was there. So, I mean, just shifting it on paper is what we've seen along the way.
We're not shifting it, we're building a new building.
Yeah, but the other building was going to be up originally on this side where the ledges were, so that's why I'm saying they shifted it from where it was going to be down to where it's being presented now.
Am I correct, Paul?
Yeah. Yeah, building probably here.
I'm one, there's three more of you.
You can drive right out back there, Paul, wow, you can come in here and drive right back, the other thing is, since you guys have been here, all that junk is gone, I had 430 yard dumpsters and an excavator, and we filled them all up, it's all gone, there's nothing, nothing is left out there that you saw in the past. All the derelict boats, all the junk, all that foam, everything is gone. I spent $37,000 this fall cleaning that up and leveling it off, and having it compacted and preloaded. I had this, that whole area right there, this whole area here, it's just nothing, but there's probably about 12 boats in here, and that is it, everything else is gone, the stuff you saw out there is gone, it's cost me a mint, but it had to be cleaned up, there's nothing left out there at all. You know, that old foam pile we had. It's all gone, nothing left, no junk, there's nothing.
I think it's, and where the other sign was, you said you want to put up the barricades, but you have several options to barricade in that road, make that nice.
You're just making a lawn, and that's a nothing but barricade, quite frankly. I think you had a lawn, and you also had a tree there.
Tree's a lawn.
Yeah, a tree lawn.
It's going to be a big berm.
Yeah, we still planned that tree, one tree right in the middle of the engine, that's where it was, you know. This would be all grass, this would be all.
Well, I know, and during the walk, they had mentioned those other real barricades, and I did, I was hoping that isn't the direction we're going, because it would look nice with the grass, a tree, a shrub, through there opening up.
The only I want to do is deter from leaving that driveway, so stuff's going to have to be set back enough so you can see what's coming, I don't want to have a problem there.
What are you talking about?
Site, he's talking about.
Oh, the site distance?
Yeah, you want to make sure.
You don't want to put a tree right there.
Yeah, no, I'm actually talking, closing up the other one.
That's what we want to do, I want that to be all lawn with trees and stuff, I want to clean that up.
Paul, you aren't going to try to put a boat out there with a mannequin behind it water skiing, are you?
You know, I'm actually, I do think I agree with Bob about the sidewalk, it's been our policy.
You know, I'm actually, I do think I agree with Bob about, I said, well, it's been our policy to do sidewalks. And this is, this is a new submission, so I think if we're, if we're true to our policy, we go, we go back out, we do another sidewalk.
To you guys.
I don't think so.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we do a sidewalk. At, at least this way we can decide up or down, yes or no.
I don't think so. I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I think we, we've been over that sidewalk enough, but, uh, I, I don't see the need to do a sidewalk, especially when we're having difficulty getting bad members to go to the sidewalk.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, I'm just saying that it's been our policy, and if we're gonna have the policy, we should follow it.
Because what is this? Is this considered an application? And that's only because it's procedural, it's a procedural requirement.
What, the application?
Yeah.
Well, that's also quite a, the only reason I would like to go, this is really a dramatic change from what was being proposed and what I had going on in my head, there's a, you know.
We don't care.
Hopefully, yeah, no, I know.
Really, if you guys.
Wait, if there was something that we could say that maybe could even help you, could benefit you. So, I mean, I'm not out there though.
Okay.
You know, the gate's open all day long.
I guess my other concern is, we don't have enough members that don't show up to sidewalk. Do a second sidewalk.
No, it wouldn't happen.
Well, question.
I'm okay with that.
It shouldn't happen if we don't go it the first time, if we don't get the people out there.
Okay, then we don't have to do it.
No, no.
Then you have enough members to vote that you officially have sidewalks, I don't wanna have to do it again.
Yep. When you, when you originally on the first proposal, you had the idea in phases of having two storage units in the ledge area. The square footage of those two proposed buildings was about what? Do you remember?
Oh, the square footage again.
They were seventy-two by a hundred, I believe.
Yeah, something like that, right?
Okay, and this one that you're changing the two for one.
Yeah, seventy-two by a hundred and sixty-five. So it's not as much.
It's not as much.
It's not as much as I was looking at doing the first time.
That's where I was going at, yeah. What actually is shrinking.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to carry this, uh, we got a motion, a second, all in favor of doing a sidewalk. I'll close. Okay. Do you wanna schedule it?
Let, let it melt.
Yeah.
It really looks good.
To be determined.
Well, we should.
No, it's not.
First meeting in April?
If, uh, it's gonna be, uh, well, we can do it at the next meeting. For the next meeting.
As long as it doesn't snow again.
Weather permitting.
I'm sorry? As long as it doesn't snow again.
I know. Okay, so the next meeting is gonna be the twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, six o'clock, do you think we need more time than that?
I can't get out at five thirty. Cause I still have customers coming in.
It shouldn't, shouldn't take that long.
You got more daylight, but I can't get out at five thirty.
Let's, uh, let's, let's plan it for six o'clock.
Six P M on the twenty-seventh? Um, although this is a formality, yeah, we're gonna have to. I don't, we have to, anyway, public hearing on this again.
What?
Yes, it's a new application.
You never had a public hearing, you know. You never went to public hearing.
Paul, are you gonna turn out and have some cones or something turn on mark in the, the building?
The road in the building.
I imagine that's a change. I, one of the reasons I said cones, because if ground's still frozen or anything else, at least you can get a visual, a visual of where the cones are on top of the snow.
Um, are you thinking putting cones for this building? That's pretty obvious, that's gonna be. You're talking about this one probably cones, but that one's gonna go.
Still have the. The late center, late center.
Make sure you know what the setting is, and maybe put four points, like, might be cones, and we don't, this one's pretty obvious.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
And with the, with the expansion, minimal increase, no increase of employees?
No, it's about, it's gonna be the same.
Okay, so we don't need to increase lab or?
Well, Paul's got me to, to the minimum requirements of retail area. That's the standard that, that's in the zone. And I think you worked out, you had to change the design of that, you could just change the location of that, right?
Yeah.
I think it's smaller, isn't it, Paul?
It is a little smaller.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, it's smaller by a fair amount.
Yeah, it is.
By the two buildings in comparison to the one.
Yeah, that's a hundred by sixty, before that it was.
Yeah, I can't.
It was a seventy by a hundred and four.
That was seventy-five hundred square feet.
Was there something else in there, though? There was something else in there, though. Or is it, this isn't all retail, no, we got warehouse?
No, that's, that's, that's gonna be.
Prepare.
The front, no, there's nothing to prepare, the front half of that's gonna be, uh, the retail area.
Yeah.
And we have a huge pots, I need a large pots area, cause we have over, we have a million three hundred thousand in pots right now that we've gotta shelve out properly so we can use. And I need some inside storage area for, cause we buy bulk, I'll buy tractor trailer or stuff out of whack for the season. And then we gotta stuff it away in our tractor trailer box that we got now. And that's how we, that's how you survive, you buy a, a huge amount of it, you get good dated, spring dated prices off our stuff, and that makes my profit a little bit better, so. We have a, we have a big volume of material we sell. It goes out the door, there are parts and other boat yards, we've got a heck of an online store.
You said you keep the parts in tractor trailers now?
Well, yeah, you've already seen those boxes up near the brown building?
Yeah.
All those are, those are all shelves and you actually go, I'll show you when you get there. You go through a door and you've got shelves and shelves and shelves that's lit up, and the tractor trailer boxes, where all of our pots are, those, that's my pots.
Bin location, but that's, that's what this building is really, is basically.
That's what this building is needed for, I need, I need a place to facilitate the retail end of it, and I need a large area to put our pots in, so we can grab what we need, do it better than what we do now. And I need an area to back in to drop stuff, you know, on the floor type stuff.
Okay, Paul, if you could, like, the employee areas.
Yep.
Parking areas.
Retail square foot.
Yeah, sooner retail's gonna be about, although that's a smaller building, retail might be smaller.
Are you, is there a back? Is there a back to drop stuff?
Well, it's, it's gonna be right here. This right here, this is gonna be like when you're driving, we have a small four truck, have a garage door in this section here.
Okay.
Probably twenty, thirty feet wide, the depth of the building, like sixty feet, just to bring stuff in. You know, we need a place to unload what we got.
And when you had set up front, I just took the lower half, that, and that, but I guess up front, the storage room.
And we're storing outboard, when I'm storing outboard motors, I mean, uh, six to ten hour boys will take this whole section of this room up, you know. Right now, I got them, I'm moving, putting those in the, underneath that four foot crawl space, we wrestle them in there right now, I've got about twelve brand new motors down there, boxes, it's a real. I need a place to open a back garage door, a four truck, and put our outboard motors in, you know, when I was, stuff that comes in like that, I just need some storage space for that end piece there. So that pretty much, that end will be like bulk storage, then pots, and then custom offices, and then the retail on the other end, for the route one end.
Um, as we normally ask, lighting plan, any lights on the outside of the building?
They're gonna be those, uh, if you go by this building tonight, my reason you go by, I had Ted, they're just, there's no, uh, they just light the door up.
Yeah, it's similar, you mentioned the lights that you gave us last night, right? So, this old blue is cut sheet.
Right. They gotta do something, I'm not sure, they gotta reset the cut sheets.
Yeah, we did, actually.
Yeah, I don't know, my blue was off.
Yeah, I agree with.
Well, he, I thought you said Jamie was coming late tonight.
Oh, that's the drainage. No, I didn't see him.
Yeah, right, he right before the drainage.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't even look at him, I looked for the other ones, the other colored ones, I have better color, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, can we schedule a public hearing the same night on the sidewalk? Well, determine it complete then. Do that yet.
Well, that's right.
Remember, this is a site plan. That's where you get confused. Conditional is normal, but, but site plan is determination of completeness. And a new ordinance, that'll be for anything.
Determination of completeness, or it's that they've submitted all of the documents required from which we can make a decision.
Reasonable decision.
Okay.
An informed and reasonable decision.
Nuances of the regulation kill you.
Well, the, the objective is basically to protect the applicant and the board, make sure the, the planning board does not just keep asking for piecemeal things.
Okay.
All right, yeah. It's a checklist, you say, we've met everything there, doesn't mean that it meets the ordinance, but they've given us everything.
They've submitted what was asked.
And, you know, it could be a denial, but we've got everything we need to make a reasonable decision. And we've met all the things in the checklist, and we've, we've got everything on the checklist. We filled out.
So we do have the complete application?
Yeah, yeah, I've got it ready, I'm gonna have, why take a look at the drainage?
Then I would make a motion that we deem the application complete.
There you go.
So that we can schedule a sidewalk. I'm not a sidewalk, I'm sorry, a public hearing.
Well, second that.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
I'll close.
And we, we have a sidewalk, uh, I'm sorry, not a sidewalk, we have a.
Public hearing.
At the next regularly scheduled meeting after we have the sidewalk.
Okay, you got a motion?
Sort of later, we'll get that sidewalk came down.
Well, I have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
On favor of having the public hearing on the next scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
I suppose? Okay. You had a comment? Yeah, I just think Paul, it may cost us, because you guys have to make a determination.
Yeah.
How you're gonna do the, uh, the performance on, you have a performance on the table. You're gonna wanna face those.
Yeah.
And probably Paul would wanna do, Paul, you're gonna use a bank on this, you're gonna have a loan on this, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, it's starting to be no way savings this time.
Okay, so we'll just do a, we'll probably do a, um, um, we have to do this, but we probably do a third party. Okay.
Is that what was already in place? I mean, did you have one on the first?
No, I didn't get that far, remember?
Well, he means on the first structure.
No. But we had a site plan then.
Yeah, but that's far as we went, we didn't get that far, did we? Open public hearings and everything else.
It'd be a, it'd be a tri-party, which means basically the bank doesn't release the money to your contractor or to whoever.
You're saying you last time?
Said this last time.
Yeah, that was my point, for the original.
Oh, for the, oh, I, fuck.
So, so I thought it was referring to. So why, rather than it beat the board, why don't, why don't we just let you guys finish your?
Well, yeah, Paul, we just need, we, we need to make that sure that that's all squared away before you.
It's in place. Or on paper.
Yeah.
Well, that discussion is needed and then.
You guys, the, the point, the point is, you guys, you guys have to verify and set that, set the, the bond mounts, that's why I'm holding this key, that's, that is. I don't do that, I negotiate, I, I put, I put the program, the key and I put the program together, you guys. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else?
See, on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about the last meeting.
Hey, as long as it starts snowing.
Well, that's right. If it's canceled, it'll be in April. So it doesn't snow.
No, I didn't think we were gonna reject anybody.
Well, I thought we had a couple more members that were coming late tonight. We're gonna, we're gonna end up with a problem. Cause I have, and I have to recuse myself of. But I apologize to you two. Um, but it was funny, I thought Jamie couldn't make.
Sidewalk.
A sidewalk, but he was coming, and I thought you said that he was coming late. And there's guy, or why I didn't say anything, cause I'm. Um.
Have I got Jamie's phone number?
My desk.
I'm just.
I didn't hear that story, we go next door, we're gonna call. Thank you very much, guys.
You like my color?
Really, God, I did.
I mean, I, I.
It was something simple.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, just something simple.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm really, right.
But.
It was the weekend of last week.
Did you get this from John?
Uh, Ted, John is out of town.
Right, John said he wasn't gonna make.
Yeah, he said.
But he would have to recuse, wouldn't he?
Yeah, he would have to.
Tom McGinn was, had a conflict.
And he, he did modify it?
He did.
Say, I miss Tom's, but I, I did read Jamie's, and he said he was gonna be late. And that's what I asked you when I first came in, and I saw, I thought you told me he was gonna be late.
No, I didn't say anything, I, I.
No, he said the sidewalk turned out, said that he couldn't make it because of the conflict of work.
Right, that's the sidewalk, right, I, I didn't, I was going to.
And Tom McGinn was, tonight at five o'clock, I found out he was coming to meeting.
We found out earlier in the day, yeah, like at.
Before.
It was, it was, it was a hell of a lot of work today.
So what color is this thing gonna be?
Well, it's not gonna be blue or any crazy color. Talking about, maybe it seems to be facility.
You aren't gonna do it pink, are you?
No, no, maybe in October, but that'd be about it.
Well, that's when you dress casually.
Right. That's right. I'll probably, uh, same color.
Was he trying to reach Jamie?
Yeah.
He's trying to reach him.
If he can get him, then if any actions ever occurred, you guys can have, you should take, take that, otherwise, here it is. These are getting longer and longer and longer, I'm so ready for the nightmare. I usually don't mind, but this one, I am just ready to have done. I never even, I never even got, she's just plowed today.
I'm just glad for these storms that dug it.
Yeah, it was.
For us, people are gone, they got what they deserve.
That's what you get for living up there.
It's better not to load trucks in the snow.
I'll close you guys out, moving into your building.
We're in.
You're operational?
Yeah, we got our occupancy permit.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Moved in. Two, yeah, second week of production. It's like heaven. Out of a lich's beach, thank God.
No, it was good while you were there, cause if you didn't start there, you wouldn't be there.
It was good the first twenty years. But yeah, now it's nice. I didn't start my truck all last week, that was so nice. Just locked it up.
Right, you're up I L, just work on?
Yeah, but it's a little bit longer hours.
You didn't snow it down, did you?
No, I didn't.
Cause you do have a incline there, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
Well, they took out the big one, right at that ledge, we used to go up with all of the kids and come all the way down through. That was a wood trail. Well, there are two. Wood trail really went all the way to the back and to the stream.
Yeah.
And then, and the far side, uh, but the one that went up over the top of the Big Knoll to the east of where you guys are.
Yeah.
Up on that, hell, that came down by where the water, where you guys went in for the big set of water, but that one. Yeah, but I'm talking about the big ledge, so they could turn it just with enough cover.
Of course, it's kinda hard with probably the sun now, probably with those, uh.
Okay, what I propose is that, we can discuss what's here, but we can't vote on it?
Can't make any.
Can't make a decision, but at least should, we can get a presentation done?
Yeah. I apologize for this. I called his work phone, I called his home phone. I know he's representing, he's at work representing Pratt and Whitney, which is what it's meant to mean, but apparently, he's, I think he's probably held up on his own, but we're planning it right now. He's not answering his phone.
Well, if you want, we can just do it at the next meeting, cause I'm gonna have to do it again anywhere, right?
Yeah. Pretty much. Let me tell you, well, you, you can make your presentation, but let me, let, let's just go over a couple things. Look, there's one thing, um, we're gonna need to know about lighting.
Yeah.
If you have any lighting.
We're gonna do soft lighting, like on the factory.
Okay, right, put that down on writing or something.
Okay.
Uh, second thought, what, what's the siding on the building?
The siding?
Yeah.
I believe we're gonna do a vinyl platterboard.
Vinyl platterboard, okay.
I'm not doing hardy plank.
Why not?
No way. If you look at it wrong, it cracks.
It's not too hardy.
It's not.
Um, third thing, the, uh, uh, what's the other, uh, yeah, uh, who's doing the design for the, uh, the retaining wall?
Um, the front one?
Yeah, cause you're over eight feet, that's gotta be engineered.
You know, I do, I went over it with, um, with Aaron Wilson, and he's the engineer for the.
He's an instructional.
Yeah, exactly, and I think what we're gonna end up doing is dropping that floor down. That way, because right now, they've got the floor so built up.
Yeah.
That the sidewalls are like four feet.
Yeah.
And I don't even know who came up with that idea, but we went out there and looked at it, and I'm like, that's not gonna work. Cause we're gonna have to bring in, I mean, we're gonna have to bring in that much fill around the building.
Oh, yeah.
So what we're gonna do is drop the floor inside and put it right on the rock, and then have a small concrete block or small concrete wall inside, and then kinda come out at grade instead of building it up.
Okay.
Cause I saw that too, and that just doesn't work, we went out there with a tape measure.
How's he gonna fix the rest of the grading on the floor then? Because one thing you wanna look at though, is your grading there is all based on that wall. And all of your drainage facilities are based on that, that elevation, that first floor elevation. This is gonna screw it up if you drop it down, you're gonna have to regrade that whole thing.
How so?
Well, and you, right now, your first floor elevation is at, um, one eighty, I remember.
I think it's one eighty-five.
One eighty-five, one eighty-six. And that's okay, because you've got all your drainage coming down the hill to one eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
But the problem is, if you drop that five feet or so forth, that screws up all your grading around there. Unless it's gonna have to recalculate the indoor elevations and all those pipes. Now, will it affect your D E P permit? Probably not.
Mm-hmm.
But it's gonna, it, the, the grading that you're showing on the plan is not gonna be the same. That's the problem.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that block wall on the front won't be eight feet, it'll be two.
It's eight at the, at the, at the largest point. Cause if you look at that corner there, you got seventy-five, it's, I think it was one seventy-five, at the, at the bow, right here, there we go.
Yeah.
And seventy-five, so that's, that's your worst part right there.
Mm-hmm.
So it's about seven and a half, eight feet. The problem is, eight feet, of course, you know, is an engineered wall, as you know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know why they.
Seven, what about seven?
Put that floor.
So high?
Yeah.
What about seven, is seven an engineered wall?
Well, the, the problem is, he, he's looking at costs and fill, that's what he, this is all, this is a huge pad, you're just, you're like a giant pad out there.
Yeah, exactly. With an eight-foot wall in front of it.
With an eight-foot wall in front of it, well, not eight foot over here, you know, and it goes down as you go towards.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why when we went out there with, um, with, um, Aaron and looked at it, if we put the, the base floor right on the rock, then we're like almost at existing ground level when we come out, we've got a little bit of a dip right here.
Right.
But, that's it, we don't need any type of basin or something.
Well, yeah, were you gonna have a two-tiered bar?
No.
Okay.
Nope, it's just a, it's got a one-foot slope over the entire thing.
The only problem is that, that's gonna drop all these grades down. Okay, well, that gets rid of those grades.
Mm-hmm.
But this grading is all gonna have to be redone, that's another thing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a cost factor for you. That's cheaper than fill.
Yes, it is.
Changing that design is cheaper than fill, but it would require you to change that design.
Mm-hmm.
So. That could be, that, that's something you gotta make this business decision on quickly.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, the only other thing, uh, I'm just curious as to how many cows you're gonna have?
Yeah, that was another question I had.
The barn only holds twenty-two milkers, ten young stock, and maybe ten adult calves.
Sure, we're looking at, at about forty?
A total, yeah, the barn will hold more.
Cause I didn't, I didn't know if you were gonna have more than that and just rotate them in and out, or how that was gonna work?
No. The plan is to make it kind of like a, uh.
As easy as possible.
Well, that, it has to be set up so that way, if she's out sick, or if I'm out sick, that one of us can run it. We're not planning on having employees or anything like that. So that's the plan, and it's more, realistically, it's, it's more of a, a test place where we can have a, a fresh supply of milk to try new products for the plant down below, and to do different things like that.
And where, where is the pasture gonna be for the cows?
Down front.
The existing field.
Yeah.
The existing field, so you'll put up some kind of fence or something so they don't wander onto, who want eleven and make hamburger?
They actually wander on down there now.
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, we've got one cow, of course.
Of course, at this, at this time of year, I don't see much, and I don't go down that road.
No, we're gonna do, um.
Up front by one eleven?
No, no, a back.
Okay, I think it's at up front.
Up front of the, uh, up front of the barn.
Forty cows are gonna be. How much are you gonna get? That, I mean, it's your business, but I'm.
They keep everything down.
They do, they keep their tall stuff down.
They keep the cambo or anything else, just. Poison I V?
Thank you.
Anything else, they're not natural of what they eat.
Um, I didn't see anything really serious in this whole thing, or in compliance with just about everything that the issue between was the grading.
Oh, I wanted to ask a question about the manure. Now, I know you're going dry here, but you know you're gonna get water in there, I mean, you're gonna get liquid, how are you gonna deal with the liquid issue? Is that something you just throw in sawdust, or, I mean, uh, bedding?
Well, I think, um, the, just based off of your dad's bet, there's very little liquid, even though the manure is reasonably thin.
The only liquid that you really have is rainwater.
Yeah.
And like the pit that my dad has now, it's all retained in there.
Right.
So it just evaporates or it stays in there.
Okay, doesn't upset the balance at all?
No.
No, I like the idea, it's, it's, it's cooking in there by itself, you know, and there's, are you gonna cover it at all, or are you just gonna?
Just keep it open.
Just keep it open?
Okay.
Cause we're doing grass fed, which is a lot different, you know, than grain fed.
Doing what?
Grass fed versus grain fed.
May have dried up the manure, it's gonna be a big slop.
Yeah, there's a lot of fun stuff there.
Patties.
And more like.
Splatter.
Right.
They're all, they're called patties.
Okay.
We can go back.
Those were my, look, but if you're gonna make those changes, we're gonna have to see the grading change on that, unless this gotta get a blow.
Okay.
Thank you. But I don't think it's gonna affect, I don't think it's gonna affect you, it shouldn't affect your, uh, D E P permit or.
Probably not, it's all gonna flow the same way, it's just a matter of.
It's a question of velocity.
Yeah.
That's it, and it, it less has to drop those numbers, you know, drop the inward elevations, certainly is gonna save a lot of money on that.
Yeah. Well, I don't like the idea of coming out the front anyway, and having a big drop-off, it just doesn't make sense to me, but.
Well, it's an easy way to deal with the grading problem.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you have to say. So, I just, I just didn't see, oh, one other question, yeah, you're doing the hay barn now?
Yes.
Okay, cause I didn't see a design for the hay barn.
Yes.
Did I miss that?
There's no, uh, there's no elevation for it, it's just laid out on the, uh, site plan. We're keeping the, um, the feed storage separate, there was an incident in Vermont with a woman that we, when we were looking at the whole building thing, she told us to keep everything separate in case of fire or something like that. So the hay and sawdust, if we have any, will have to be separate. Yeah.
Speaking of that, will there be any water coming up toward the, the, uh, cow barn or the hay barn? I know right now it goes up to the factory, but will there be any, any further waters going further up?
For fire?
In, in case of fire, cause that, that hay barn's gonna take everything you've got in the, in that pond.
Yeah, the, I don't, we don't have any plans to bring any water up there.
Okay. I, I'm just curious, cause I, we went to the, Andy's Angway a couple years back, and we drained, we drained two different ponds in two different places, and we still didn't get out.
Yeah, basically, well, the woman that we spoke with at Norwich, um, she told us, because their hay barn actually caught fire, and it was next to the barn, and she told the firemen to let the hay barn go and spray the barn. So they put all the hoses on the barn and just let the hay barn go, and that's why it's kinda far away.
Okay.
Just in case, you never know.
No, no, there isn't.
How far, where is that, uh?
It's down below. Here's the house, I'm here.
It's over here.
Moving the factory?
Yeah.
Yeah, the factory is, um, house is here, factory's here.
Yeah.
Where, down here?
Yeah, factory is down here, and one eleven's over here.
It's hard to get married, cause you don't know where you can't see where things are.
There's sort of like a little bow up there that's.
Factory, exactly, yeah.
So you're, you're right on the backside of my property.
Yeah, right, this is the, well, between us, this'll be my house over here somewhere, right?
Nope, your house would be down here, factory's here.
Okay.
And the field goes like, uh.
Oh, you're in the second field door, I was looking at that one, you know, at the back of that little field of mine.
Exactly, by the, uh, by the ponds there?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're way over there, we're probably a little power line.
You're the other way.
Yep.
All right, and will you have to eventually turn on clarity of, uh, farther down for more pasture?
I don't think so, uh, we can't go further down because the property ends, and.
I, I'm just not really seeing the, the whole map, and I'm just, you know, listening to where the factory's here, turn out and, and, you know.
Sure. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna rotationally graze the existing, what we have, see how that goes, and then we'll go from there. But it should be, we, at the start, we're gonna have about fifteen large cows, and what we've got right now should be more than enough for them, plus you always put out feed extra for them anyway. So.
And where the chickens gonna be?
I suppose.
I'll just, uh, you know, get your morning calls. Nobody goes in?
No roosters.
Huh?
No roosters.
Good.
Okay, good, we apologize for how many guys come on here, I might be able to act more favorably. You got any other comments?
No, I, I, I thought it was a fairly good application, I just had some, just those questions, and I'm glad we talked about that path, because it sounds like you have a little bit of work to do before next week. So, get that squared away.
You guys have any other questions?
No, I normally.
So we're on to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
But at least, at least now you got a little homework to do and we'll.
Yeah, and you guys have got a pretty good idea what we're doing.
Yes.
All right, just stop bothering.
But the new factory is going well.
Okay, when are we gonna deal with the, how many, when, when's occupancy going, going?
That already took place.
The occupancy?
Yeah.
They issued the occu- occupancy permit?
As far as I know.
Right, well, you guys owe me some landscaping.
Yes, we do. Soon as it thaws, you got it.
Yeah, the ground's a little frozen.
I'll have to ask Todd about that, cause I told him that, and he said, yeah, okay, then we'll worry about that when we get there, I guess, um, okay. So you're operational, is that what she's saying?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Litch Beach was kinda giving us the boot.
No, I would never guess it.
By, cause I do know how your old process of place was, turn out eventually, are you gonna be able to produce more, I mean, or stay more, stay about what your limits are now, I mean, uh, I'm just asking for clarity, and that, you know, and I don't know, I mean, I just.
We do about a tanker a week, and we should be able to do maybe three in a week. But it's gonna be one of those things where.
Steps.
Yeah, and, you know, I'd like to have a little bit of a life too, so, it'll be just a time management thing, where we'll do what we can and still be able to do things.
Yeah, keep your product moving.
Yeah, it's not like a twenty-four hour shipping, cause that doesn't interest me. Twelve, fourteen hours a day is enough for me.
Short day.
Yeah, right.
Todd, did you wanna get on the, uh, D B two district stuff tonight?
No. Not with, not without a full board. I'm not gonna keep repeating this over and over again and going back and forth on the, the news without a full board. Because when we do that, thank you very much, folks.
Yeah.
You have any questions for us, by the way?
Nope, just as long as you're satisfied with what we put in front of you, aside from that, we'll get that taken care of and see you in. Sounds good?
Yeah.
Can we get those revisions to be as fast as possible?
Sure will.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Fire away.
Have you changed? Cause I haven't loved, I don't know.
I will tell you on this one, Roger.
We've gotta run out the old stuff, and then the new stuff already has it on there.
Okay, I was just. Well, the reason I mean, like was Joe before.
Yeah.
We have been very anal, okay, about the idea of turning it, uh, if you turn it here, being a rundle, you know, that's why I'm asking that.
Yeah. Yeah, as far as I know, I haven't seen it, um, but I know that the fronts have changed, and I think they're changing the, uh, the back as well, and just sort of gonna star a little bit, don't change the name.
Like I said, it's just for being nosey for the. Well, no, no, I mean, I was just, you know, just with, I mean, uh, you know, when you, when you build, then you, like you said, inventory, you can't waste the inventory.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got, um, we've got probably two or three months of inventory. But all the new stuff, we're changing the, um, the foil around too, and that'll say a rundle on it.
I was, like I said, I was just asking.
One would like your attention?
Yes. Trying to have a little pour.
All right, we're bailing out.
I'm, I'm probably just as guilty as the next guy, cause if I just a meeting, I'd wanna be able to discuss it. But I think, I honestly think we need to make a policy that says, we, we had the meeting, we made a decision, you weren't here, live with it.
Make, it's gotta be that way, cause we, we're gonna be doing this as well.
Otherwise, yeah.
How many times in the past, chief?
We kick it back and forth all the time.
Yeah.
And I said, I'm as bad as the next guy.
It takes two or three different meetings just to try to regroup again.
Yeah.
Well, I, I will tell you honestly, I have not, I did not have a chance this week to do what you gave me a charge to last Thursday, which was come up with a incentive system for residential in that district. I just haven't had the time to put together, guys. I've been working at it, but I don't have anything final, because I've scrapped two systems that I worked on this week, it just didn't work. And what, what, I will tell you this, the one system that I decided on was to actually go with something Jamie and I just mentioned, between each of us, was to have the, uh, to have the bailout system of one, one, you know, resident per, per a lot, like the complaint committee recommended. And then, uh, then make large lots. Two to three acres, given the soil conditions out, two, two, three acres for subdivision, anything more than that, you're gonna have to go to a performance standard. The performance standard in that would be, uh, if you want smaller, smaller lots, lots would have to be, uh, related to a bit, uh, integrated business development, so it'll be sort of like a P U D situation.
Right.
Yeah, okay, you wanna do that, you're, you're limited to X number of lots, or large lots, and then you would go down to, uh, smaller lots, but it's gonna have business in it. So it's actually a P U D thing, which you guys didn't wanna do. But, I mean, that's the only way it's going to, unless you hold fast on the concept of we're not going to allow residential subdivisions in this district, without it being integrated with some sort of business thing, that's what we have to do. Because the board at that Thursday meeting, quite frankly, just, you know, reversed itself on, on not allowing residential in that district.
They have taken the position that we are not allowing residential?
No, we are.
We are.
Yeah, we are. What, what happened?
Is this the meeting at the end of February? Is this the meeting at the end of February?
Of last week.
It's last week.
Oh, last week, I missed out completely.
And you missed that, you also missed the, the public hearing. But what happened was, we had a number of, of property owners that through the assistance of the, of the, of the complaint committee, we had to meet with the property owners. We tried this several times. And actually, more showed up to the meeting than showed up to any of the public hearings. And uh, they came and basically said, we don't want you to touch our ability to develop lots in the DB two district or in the R two district for residential purposes, 'cause we don't believe you're gonna, we're gonna be able to develop business lots. And that was several. There was only a few, understand that. We're talking about a few people. And where, and the biggest, and most of the centers of them were non-residents. And the property was.
I still like, I still like that four or five year time period and then it automatically conver- I know, I know you don't, but, you know. Then you got Half Glass right now and the possibility of the whole plan being implemented without any controversy.
Well, you also have a chance of the whole, the whole district being filled up with residential lots.
Two little, two little ones.
Two little lots.
Two, two parcels. Those are the.
I guess I'm confused. I don't know what you mean by two parcels.
Two parcels of land, the people that thought that wanted their rights preserved, there were the two groups. There are two parcels. The one up on the left on the map that you showed?
Yeah.
Okay, and one over on the right side. Those are, those were the two parcels where they wanted to potentially do residential sometime in the future.
Well, and they, I, they didn't say they wanted to do residential. They wanted to be left open to residential. And that's when I asked them the question, if, if you were approached to date that from a business perspective, you wouldn't be able to enter with that lot?
No, I know. I agree. And I think, I think the way that it's written is of more benefit to them, however, they don't. So, that, that is, without resolving that, either the way that you're going or in a time, giving them a period of time to do it, the likelihood, to me, hasn't happened in forty years. It's probably not gonna happen in four.
Well, you know, remember, the whole thing, that's, that's kind of looking backwards instead of forward. I think we're, we're missing a few things. I think, you know, remember, the whole objective was, was to create an identity center, but to make it to sell the area for business. And one of the ways you were doing that was to make a lot of hoopla about it, as we are. Uh, and also to make it as business friendly as possible and character oriented. The reason why people didn't come to a rundle is 'cause they say, I'm aware. They don't come here, there's a reason they don't come here. There's nothing in our ordinance that prevents people, businesses from coming to a rundle. There's nothing in there, it's a very, actually, the ordinance is, is super generous in an area that isn't particularly good environmentally for the kind of businesses that need to go in there. It's lousy soil, still. It's better than it is up, up in the upper portion of Route one, but it's still not the best thing in the world. And yet, they, they, and we have very, very liberal ordinances and they still aren't coming. Why is the question? That's what we have to keep asking ourselves. And, and what it boils down to is, is the issue of a rundle, a rundle where? People aren't aware of the town, they're not aware of business opportunities, they don't see an identity here, there's no reason to be here. They go to Kennebuck. But I know Benifer is in that quarter, but they're going to Kennebuck Port, but they're going down to Wells, but they don't think of a rundle as, as, as a destination for anything, except for.
Drive-through.
Well, not drive-throughs, Marty. We don't have any drive-throughs.
No, drive-through. From Benifer to Kennebuck.
Except to space.
Drive-through.
So, it'll be empty space until we start doing something about it. Quite frankly, I think that the seasonal cottages are gonna be a game changer. Now, they're not in that district, but I think they're gonna be a game changer.
I think they'll, they'll pull in a lot of small businesses that are oriented toward a tourist industry.
The other thing is, and, and if that is successful, which we would hope it would be, uh, it would also result in people wanting to take advantage of that business, but also probably some copycat business, copycat developments. I would, I would estimate, considering especially since Wells just shut down, put a moratorium on all seasonal cottages in their town. So, that's it, we're not gonna do it anymore.
Why did they do that, you know?
I talked to John Carter about that. There are a lot of reasons. One, some of the standards were starting to slip. And uh, they pulled a moratorium because they wanna upgrade the standards for these things. They weren't getting the quality they want. And one good thing about Joe that I have to, do have to admit, Joe's put in a lot of effort, money into marketing uh, to make it a, a very, his market group requires, demands a certain amount of, uh, a certain environment. And so, he's gotta create that environment. And that's one of his big, you know, one of his big expenses, is creating that kind of environment. It's not just gonna be slapdash project. It's, it's gotta have image all the way through it. And frankly speaking, part of his marketing, as we will discover as he makes his presentation to the townspeople, is his marketing isn't just for his project, it's marketing for a rundle. Remaking the image of a rundle, putting it on the map. So, which is something we haven't done. So, that's why, Bob, I, I think, I think some of the positive things that we're doing.
And he's.
Even if it's image, even if it's.
See, he hasn't done anything, but we've got image then.
Well, I have. We're getting perceptual changes.
Yeah, and it takes time. It takes five years with, with, to where we're at, and we don't even know if his project's going through.
Well, at, at least one thing with.
Don't know if he's gonna have any.
Well, no, he has financing. We don't know, it's, the issue with financing is gonna be whether or not, you know, the town goes along with the tip. The tip doesn't go along, then, then you wanna have a big question.
At least with him, uh, he's managed to get something along Route one, which we never had before.
Marty, I've said, this is the biggest project, has the biggest potential, or a rundle of anything.
No, this, what I'm referring to is, is like your water. I mean, he brought it, he brought it forward.
I agree. I agree. That's wonderful, that's good, that's great. The five years and, and that's what we have.
I agree with you.
A potential. That's my point.
Yeah, well, I'm agreeing with you.
And this is concerted effort, wanting to go with money. Okay? That's how, that was my first change. Well, I might have a plan and I, I would just like to be able to have that out there. Five years goes pretty fast.
Yeah, right. I, I'm not sure why the people, those, those particular two individuals made those comments, because they haven't been approached to develop it for residential use.
For in eighty years, one of them said.
Yeah, in eighty years. I mean, it, it isn't gonna happen tomorrow morning. I mean, we got public farms over there with thirty lots waiting to be built on and, and other prime lands for, so I don't see that as happening unless there's sewer and water going in there that I don't know about. So, I, that really shocked me. And what was discouraging is they waited till that meeting last week to bring this to the forefront, when they could have been brought to the public hearing. They knew we've had these meetings all along. We've been doing this for two years.
Well, I think a lot of property owners didn't know.
No, I'm gonna say, I agree with you.
And they didn't care.
That's the thing, I think.
They don't care if it's waving in front of their face and when we, and this is one of the things that we did do. And we did this when we did DB one and DB two. The original DB one and DB two is we sent notices to all the property owners along that quarter. I know, I sent them all out. And we, we didn't get a huge stirrup, but we did get dribbles of people coming in during the process. We didn't get that from the DB two property owners, 'cause we didn't really notify, the ones who really were, were looking at it from a business perspective, we did talk to. We talked to Lenny Z, we talked to Bentley, we talked to a number of other property owners. But we didn't talk to the Rita Drews, and we didn't talk to the uh, we didn't talk to these folks, I forget their names.
Witten's?
Witten's. We didn't talk to Witten's. We didn't talk to those people, um, about it, because they weren't business people. They're just landlords. We concentrated on talking to business people. And, and the issue here is that, um.
No, excuse me, it's correcting you. Okay? They have been business, because we're, the foreign car.
Yeah.
For the VW, that is the Witten's turnaround, because he used to run that, but his son is running it now. So, they were business owners.
That's him.
In town. And in this town.
Which, which property is that?
It's foreign car.
Foreign car.
S L?
No. I'm talking right across the street from a rundle antiques.
Oh, okay.
That's the Witten's.
That's the Witten's, okay. Well, they got notices.
No, I'm just saying.
They got notices early, you know, so. Okay, I understand what you're saying. But we have property owners that we've, we've basically told them outright, look, you've got, you've got an opportunity now to do business work. I mean, you have an opportunity you didn't have before. You have an opportunity to do, to, to now have business zoning where you didn't have it before. You weren't usually in, in a two acre zoning, two acre residential zoning with, you know, basically, uh, with lots that were isolated or landlocked. Or so far, so deep, that like the Drews lot, Rita Drews lot, so deep from, it went from pole post road almost to Route one. And that back section of the land is gonna cost so much, it's a narrow fairly, you know, like, costs so much to build a road for residential, and there's so much, so much lack of demand for residential, that obviously, they'll get it and say, well, we're not gonna develop that anytime soon. This is a new opportunity. We told them that, and there are those who, who aren't believers in it. And I believe a rundle can be a business, a business nexus, a business center. And then there are those who do. Pam Drew is on the fence. She's not sure yet, for instance. But the folks from Winthrop are sure. They want in. They were saying, count us in.
Yeah, I'm just hoping they understand that those road loops in there are conceptual.
They did understand, 'cause I talked to them later about it. I said, that's what's possible. But, you know, you, you need to talk to the neighbor, you know, you need to talk to Stephanie, you need to talk to uh, to Pam, you know.
Yeah.
How do we work together on this thing? We should work together on this.
Okay, move things along. Plan's report? Anything unusual?
Uh, no, let's see.
Kate's gotta get a vacuum.
Yeah, she's got one set of, like, the case. Um, how's that going? So, there's your report, Marty. You didn't have to ask me about it this time, did you?
No, I mean, they, while you were out, they said they got their occupancy permit, when you were trying to.
Get ahold of Jim.
Yeah. How did that happen, really?
I don't know, 'cause it was supposed to be, um, I, I told, I had told the powers that be that, that there were unfulfilled requirements on the permit that needed to be done prior to the issues of, of the occupancy.
Is it listed as a condition on the occupancy perhaps?
Yeah.
No, on the occupancy permit? When it was issued, sometimes that can get put as a condition.
Let me ask you, did you process an occupancy permit?
I did not.
I didn't either.
But that doesn't mean it wasn't done. It might have been done by the temporary CEO and Tom. And I.
Isn't that passed on to you directly to file?
Not immediately. I mean, she may have to, I don't know. I did not receive one.
Maybe they're just operating.
He said that they are.
You know what? He, you know, you, when you said you got an occupancy permit, he says, I, he said, I think so. Yeah.
And he said they were operational for two weeks, I believe.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, but I know, a week ago, they hadn't been issued it. That's why I was surprised, dude.
Well.
They have been running.
Maybe he's wrong on his time.
They have been running for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay, so. I will, I will address that to the town manager tomorrow. Uh, anything else on the, yes, uh, let's see, what do we have coming up? What do we do this week? Well, we, we did the tip, the CMP tip three, four times, over several times.
Do you want our paper?
Well, there, there were points there, Marty, where it was not to our benefit. But, um, there was a lot of negotiation, a lot of changes, a lot of things that, that occurred. And uh, the CMP tip is now gone. The selectmen have accepted it. And it's going to, uh, the special town meeting on, um, on.
March twenty-fourth at seven P M.
Seven P M.
When, when it is.
All residents are being notified via postcard mail.
I was notified via email, or via text about it today and told to show up in uniform. I'm not gonna be there on March twenty-fourth.
Why not?
I'm busy. I'm working.
Okay.
Well, what it, what it will generate, very honestly, uh, in that situation, is it will generate a minimum of about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year that goes directly to the fire department for certain uses. And given CMP, so the, one of the biggest problems with CMP, the numbers, uh, remember when we, we got the numbers from the, from CMP, when they were first approved, they said six million dollars worth of valuation?
Lots.
Lots of valuation. Uh, then when I really tried to nail them down several times, they said, well, maybe five. And then when I really talked to Steve, and when I talked to the guy who's in charge of the real estate, who does the assessing, who sends out the notes, sends the material to the state, the state does the actual assessing, it's done by the state. Uh, he came back and said, well, it's probably gonna be around one. So, we went from six to one million dollars. It's been a roller coaster ride trying to make it all work.
That just goes back to that whole point when they first came through and said that they were gonna do this. They lied to us the last time they did it, now they've lied to us again.
Well, no, I, I, I appreciate what CMP has done, because they have been feeding me for the truth, the truth for a while, and then they, they low-balled it and the, the assessment that's coming through in this, this coming spring is gonna be about one point five million. And it's gonna be followed, they say, with another seven hundred thousand the, the following year. So, but I didn't write the tip for that. I wrote the tip, I low-balled the tip. So, we would never find ourselves in a situation where we're going to bonding, but all of the bonding will be done way after the, uh, after, not way after, but after, all of the bonding is based on the low-ball volume, a low-ball number of twenty-eight thousand a year. Um, it'll go up to forty. But all the bonds are based on twenty-eight thousand. To ensure that we never get caught in a situation where, you know, we're actually paying for, for bonding for something that we are not getting the revenue source for. So, it was a long, hard road. But it's, it's gonna be there for a town meeting, and what it does is ensure that there's a revenue stream to the, to the fire department to get, to get your wildland firefighting itself in order. And maybe a bay to this thing.
We don't have any room for a bay.
Well, that's true.
There's this thing called the.
There's this thing called the town hall. But that's twenty, but, but that, that, that's twenty years from now. So, if I then, if we're still in there, then you don't deserve a bay.
If we're still in a town, that town building twenty years from now and I'm alive, my taxes are gonna be extremely low, less than what I'm paying now. Anything else?
Uh, that's about it. We have, yeah, we, activities, staff review, the last thing the staff reviewed did was, uh, I think Rocky Lane?
Yeah, you already told me about that.
Told you about Rocky Lane, okay. Now, this, there's no new things. The only other thing I have to mention is that the, uh, all of the towns, coastal towns are currently appealing the shoreline zoning, uh, maps. Uh, we are not going to. We are title, but um, there's not huge changes to shoreline zoning maps that are gonna overly adverse our, our, our community. So, we're not, we're not really going to, um.
That's the new FEMA map?
That's the new FEMA map. It's pretty much being done by all the coastal communities, because it includes sea level rise. Twenty feet, twenty feet or so.
Yeah.
It's data wipeout, man. Most of, most of these coastal communities in terms of zoning. So, that's why they're doing it. It's not impacting us the same way. So, that's why we're not having to spend the money to appeal.
Of course, to town, also too, I don't know, I think we mentioned it, but they were using a flat map, they weren't using topo.
They're still not using the topo. They're still not using the topo.
I mean, that's.
Yeah. They're using aerials. But it's, it's based on assumption of sea level rise, Marty, that's what it is. And it's based on sea level rise, that includes global warming issues.
Yeah, why is warming the world?
Climate change. Come on, you gotta get with the program. It's climate change, global warming.
You can call it goose.
It's like old weather pattern.
That's lipstick on a pig.
Just that they're longer cycles. This has happened three times already, so. But anyways. Well, you tell the global warming about the temperature tonight.
If, if that's, if that's all the planner has, then I'm gonna return.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Um, we have another item on the agenda.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah? Schedule the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, what are we gonna do, guys? We're up against the deadline.
Um, we got a meeting the twenty-seventh.
And quite frankly, I wanna get them all in, and I wanna take them all as one warrant. And I wanna do the splitting them up more and stuff. That's either divide and conquer.
Yeah. Uh, we have a special meeting the week after the twenty-seventh, which is what?
April third.
Geez. We've gotta get all this stuff done by May. I don't know how this is gonna happen. 'Cause I gotta do all the performance standards, so. I may just have to give you a, a packet. Trust me on it.
Um, okay, the next.
No bubble.
The next meeting, we got the Kate's butter, and we got, um.
Southern Marine.
Southern Marine.
We also have, uh, we also have the, uh, the Lord boys.
Yeah, we gotta reschedule our sidewalk, let alone, um.
Yeah.
You could probably do that via email, right? Try to get a date with the applicant.
Uh, yeah, we can set a date with the applicant, but setting a date with the board via email.
Like, give a couple options, you know, and then get a freedom of speech or.
Don't count on Thursdays. You're gonna have to be looking at, like, doing sidewalks on non-Thursdays. 'Cause Thursdays are a crappy weather, let's not bet. Seems like.
Why not Thursdays? I, you know. Well, I was glad to see that we moved away from thinking our weekends, you know.
Well, the problem was, nobody was coming to the weekend ones. And of course, this is not fair to the, this is not fair to the applicants.
To the applicant.
We are not serving the applicants.
Why not Thursdays now?
We can do Thursday, but people don't seem to show on Thursdays. We didn't have a forum for tonight.
Yeah, this is the fir-, this is the first time, though, Frank.
We're not having a forum? We've missed three sidewalks if we're not having a forum. Three, and the manager, I'll be very honest with you.
Well, I mean, that Thursday. Oh, wait, I.
No, they weren't. Two of them, two of them were on Saturdays, or three of them.
Yeah.
Three of them were Saturdays.
There were two of them on Saturdays.
Two of them on Saturdays.
One I was by ear. I think anybody that missed, I'd be told to go on.
Okay, so.
Next workshop.
The next workshop. We have it, uh, April, first, Thursday in April.
You don't have enough time to wait till April.
Well, I'm, I'm out of time. You got, the next meeting is the twenty-fourth. Oh, you're next week, you're saying?
Yeah. I don't know how we're gonna do it.
Twentieth?
'Cause we have three items on the agenda.
Yeah, alright, so, so you guys have a meeting next Thursday?
I have taxes next Thursday. I can't.
I can't make it.
So next Thursday.
That's just the nature of my job.
Yeah, I know, you're, you're not gonna be there, so now we're back to four members.
Right, and you don't want to discuss.
No, we're gonna have, we're gonna, it's gonna be, decisions can be made by four members, it's four members, it's four members, that's all it is to it, because. So it is, it's gonna have to be that way.
So let's schedule for next Thursday.
Okay. I will have the DB2, I will have two options for you for DB2. All right, I'll start writing them up tomorrow and I'll ship them off to you Tuesday, okay?
Yeah, can we make a click option that we, we go yes or no?
Well, we've done that before, and it's worked really well, then we reversed that.
And we can't reverse it tonight.
Well, if you make motions and vote.
And motions occur, well, that's true.
See, if we had, if, yeah, but, then we have to remember, see, we've done it, I'm sure if somebody did their diligence and went through, we did motions, I, I started doing one, trying to stop some of it, and then lost control again. So unless, and I know it's hard, but unless you develop a list that you can keep right in front of you.
Okay, so next Thursday, we gotta meet in the code enforcement offices.
I will try, if I'm done with taxes, I'll try to be here.
C E O office?
Yeah, or here, maybe here.
No.
Maybe not.
C E O office is plenty of room.
If we have a lot of people show up, well, we're gonna have the same problem we had before. And also, it's not handicap accessible.
Do you have, okay, do you have enough time to post it that we're having a workshop meeting?
I have enough time to post it, I don't have enough time to get to arrange anything with the school, because they want we can send dance notice, so, you know.
What do you mean as far as public attending?
Well, we post the agenda on the website.
Yeah.
We don't have to notify via email or anything.
Although I've told everybody that I would notify, because that's, you know, it would keep the public aware. Well, I do email, I'll email them that we have a meeting, but if I have enough, the code enforcement office will probably have the same situation where we have more members of the public attending than planning members.
So you can ask tomorrow where the location could be, there or here.
Well, I'll call Mary Lou tomorrow and see if we can get.
All right, so location to be determined.
On your DB2.
Aye.
Have we heard it in there from Branch Brook?
Branch Brook was in favor of it.
No, I'm just saying, as we're going down along that way, I mean.
I don't think they were concerned about, the, the property owners that, that the, that the complaint committee was concerned about were basically the big, the big property owners behind Old Post Road, they were the Drews, and essentially the Drews, Hemlock Campground, I have heard from them, and the Drews.
And the Madores.
And Bentley, and then the other ones on the other side, on the west side, are a whole bunch of people. I've not heard from Stephanie, and I've heard from, I haven't heard from, I haven't heard from a lot from there.
Well, when I was wondering, you said Pam Drew.
Yeah.
Okay, but there is another Drew.
Yeah.
Is borderlines Branch Brook.
Yeah.
We haven't heard anything from her.
No. Haven't heard anything from her.
Eleanor.
No. I'm not sure she owns that either. I don't remember an Eleanor Drew. Well, when I did the.
It was Eleanor Drew, or, I tried to think, Garnett?
Yes. I did notify Garnett. Yeah, they were notified, they're on the list.
Make motion to a chair.
I already got one, need a second.
Well, I'll second.
On favor?
You had done it before that.
I had, I had even realized that one was going.
Sorry, gentlemen, I didn't have that for you.
Have what?
Uh, the rest of the DB2 scenarios, ran out of time.
It wasn't critical tonight, anyway.
Well, they made some decisions.
No, I just put it, I just, I shut it.
No, no, I shut it.
Unless we make a, a policy, we're gonna run into this problem any time, and you're right, we need to have a list in front of us.
It is policy, once you make the.